Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting for April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation and Mr. Mobley to do the pledge. If y'all all stand, please.
Most gracious turn of Father God, we come now, God, thankful in our hearts and mind. We thank you, Father, for how you blessed us, watched over and kept us, oh, God. We thank you for our last night's rest. And, God, you watched over and kept us. We didn't have no emergency phone calls. No one broke in our homes to disturb our rest, oh, God. And we woke up this morning, God, feeling rejuvenated. And we thank you for a day going through this day, oh, God. And you're blessed to allow us to come to this meeting, dear God. Blessed have your heart and mind that's here, God. Blessed be in the mighty way. And look on these, dear God, on this dais, God, that you've blessed us, oh, God. Help us, oh, God, to fulfill the duties that you have us to do, dear God, as commissioners, dear God. Let's be true to our calling as commissioners, God, that we shall do all things that is right for this community, for this district, and for our counties. And, oh, God, look on their God, our officials, God, in the mighty way. Look on every department, look on our first responders, oh, God, and look on our federal and our state and local government, God. Blessed in the name of Jesus. We're so thankful, oh, God, for being this blessed country that we're in. And, God, continue to protect us, dear God, from all harm and danger, dear God. We see wars and rumors of wars everywhere, but, Lord, you continue to keep this nation, dear God, free of wars, dear God. And, Father, we pray, dear God, that you continue to hold us in the hand of our hand, and we ever give you the praise and the glory. In Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Blessings be to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice.
For all you commissioners, Mr. Hancock desk, if y'all would pull your mics a little closer so they can hear out there.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Moving on to item number one, approval of minutes for the April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three regular board meeting. Is there any changes or a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. Before we start on the consent agenda, I'm gonna move on to the time-specific items. Item number fifteen at five thirty-five or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold the first of two public hearings to consider LDR two-three dash oh-two, an application by the Board of County Commissioners to amend the text of the Land Development Regulations by deleting section four point one-four point five A, two special exceptions, travel, trailer parks, or campgrounds, and adding section four point one-four point five B, three RV parks or campgrounds, four other uses that may be compatible with the district as a special permit in the Commercial Highway Interchange Zoning District, deleting section four point four point five A seven, special exceptions, travel, trailer parks, or campgrounds, and adding four point four point five RV parks and campgrounds. Other uses that may be compatible with the district as a special permit, changing the title of section four point one-nine point two-four from travel, trailer parks, or campgrounds to RV parks and campgrounds, and adding criteria for such. Mr. Meeks?
Sorry for the wording in the agenda items, Chairman.
It's fine. I just read it like I see it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'll swear everybody that may, if anybody believes they may give testimony at the public hearing today, would you stand to be sworn? Any seeing none but staff?
Oops. Please raise your right hand then, okay? All right. Do each of you swear or affirm
the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. And as you approach the podium, if you would, state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Yeah, I think she's something else, yeah.
Mr. Meeks?
Okay.
So I believe the, uh, the actual title of the agenda item says most everything. But, um, going to a little more detail, you know, after we had had workshops with Board of County Commissioners and dealing with, uh, the RV permit process, um, it was brought up at one of those, um, meetings to address the, um, RV parks and campgrounds that we have in the county. Um, so we took some of the, uh, comments from the commission, and we formulated the amendment, um, starting with, um, we'll start with the Agricultural One Zoning District because it, it, it ends up being first. Um, traditionally, the special exception process has allowed for, um, a variety of recreational-type uses, RV parks and campgrounds, or travel, trailer parks and campgrounds being previously listed as a special exception that was under the powers and duties unauthorized, a public hearing before the zoning board of adjustment. Um, we have deleted that language from that portion of the special exception and moved it to section B, which would be under special permits, which, under the powers and duties of the Land Development Regulations, gives that authority to the Board of County Commission. So the public hearing process will change a little bit in that they will no longer go to the Board of Adjustment. They will come to the Board of County Commissioners for that, uh, special permit request for RV parks and campgrounds. Um, in doing so, while we were doing the amendment, we just actually grabbed some language that, uh, we had talked about before, um, and I've seen other counties have that. Um, it was really not a way to spell out any and all types of uses that may come before the board under a request. So we had included other similar uses which are compatible with the character of the district. So in the Agricultural One Zoning District, if we have uses that are proposed that, that can be considered under a special permit, they would be treated as a public hearing. They would come before this Board of County Commissioners for approval. Um, that, that takes care of the Agricultural One Zoning District. We then went into the Commercial Highway Interchange District. Um, beans A-one and CHI are the only two districts we address. Those are currently the only two districts that allowed for travel, trailer parks, and campgrounds by special exception previously. So in both of those sections, they will now be moved to special permits and be re-titled as RV parks and campgrounds. We also put the language in there, other similar uses which are compatible with the character of the district. Uh, I know in a lot of our Commercial Highway Interchange Zoning Districts, we have, uh, several uses that are consistent with our Employment Center land use category. Um, and we've been expanding those, um, zoning districts for the, uh, Commercial Highway Interchange at a lot of these, uh, interstate interchanges. This will also give us another tool to, to look at other uses that may be coming and be compatible with that Commercial Highway Interchange, um, zoning district to allow for those special permits to come before the commission for the approval. Section four point nineteen of the Swan County Land Development Regulations is a supplementary, a supplementary, uh, land use regulation district. So you will see that in the Ag One Zoning and the CHI District, it will refer you to section four nineteen twenty-four of the Land Development Regulations, which talks about travel, trailer parks, and campgrounds. And under that section, we've reclassified that as RV parks and campgrounds, and existing in that language was just some standard generalized language that we had for campgrounds. There was a certain square footage requirement for the sites that were located there, and there were some setback requirements, you know, for property lines. Um, in some of the comments that we had with the commission, we took, um, some limitations and added in there that, you know, these RV parks and campgrounds would be limited to collector and arterial roads. In our land use regulations and comprehensive plans, um, it has the, the roads of the county listed out. They're either listed as local streets, collector roads, arterial roads. So in limiting the location of these RV parks and campgrounds to the collector and arterial roads, it gives a better, um, access, uh, access to the property as well as, you know, making sure that the proper driveways can be installed, uh, for pulling in travel trailers and motorhomes that would be coming to the properties. Um, the next section there is that in A-one districts, RV parks and campgrounds should not be located closer than five miles from the nearest boundary of an existing RV park and campground. We addressed that in the Ag One Zoning District because the CHI specifically calls out that the district intent in a CHI district is to cater to the traveling public. So that would always come before the commission under a special permit, and then it would be the applicant's responsibility to demonstrate the need of that, you know, in, in a CHI district. If we have an existing RV park or campground there and the need exists to add an additional, uh, the board would still always have that authority to approve or disapprove that, that allowed use. Um, that's pretty much the summary of this amendment in dealing with the RV parks and campgrounds, and then also adding that other language in there that, uh, for uses that would be compatible with the character of the district. Um, this is the first of two required public hearings for the adoption of the ordinance. Not asking for any action of the board tonight unless you have some recommended changes that you would like to see to the language. Uh, but this is an opportunity for public hearing to allow the public to comment, and we will come back before this board at our May meeting with the adoption of the ordinance. If you don't have any questions, me at this time, I would enter the file into the record.
Okay. Take the file in as composite exhibit number one.
I just have one question, Mr. Meeks, for me. If somebody wanted to expand the campground, they already have an existing campground, they want to expand it. What, what's the process for that?
Process would be the same as a regular special permit. They just wouldn't be held to the same criteria of a distant setback.
That's what I was.
So it would be, it, that, that doesn't apply to existing RV parks, campgrounds. So what it would do is, uh, they would have to file an amended site plan, come before this board for whatever number of sites they want to increase that existing campground to, and this board would, would handle the approval or disapproval by adoption of a resolution.
Yeah, that answers my question. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynn.
Um, this is, I don't know if this is for Mr. Pravat or you, Mr. Meeks, but on the, on number three, under, um, four point one-nine-two-four, it says, RV parks and campgrounds shall be limits, limited to property accessing a collector or arterial road. On that collector or arterial road, is there any light that you make, could shed on what the definitions of those two types of roads are so that maybe someone, you know, that was potentially researching a property would understand what, what a collector or what, and what we considered or what the county considered an arterial road would be?
They are defined in the Land Development Regulations and also listed in the, in the land use regulations by classification. So if you look up County Road forty-nine, it's good, in, in the LDRs, if you look up that road, um, it's in our traffic circulation element.
It's in the comp plan.
And it's in the comp plan and the LDRs is gonna tell you that this is a major collector road.
Okay.
Whereas like, uh, a, 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 a small street in a neighborhood is gonna be classified as a local street. So in, in a, in a specific neighborhood, then that would not be available, but it would be available on all of the main county roads within, within the county.
Would it, would it be, um, unnecessary to add in there, see such-and-such list in the comp plan or whatnot for definition, or is that, am I overthinking that, Mr. Pravat?
Well, when you start out with the, looking at the whole plan, they got a whole section of definitions to start with. I think it would be superfluous.
Okay.
But I would, I would switch them. I would say arterial first and collector second because of the size. That's all.
And, Mr. Pravat, have you looked over this?
No, sir. Um, I, I mean, not in any more in depth than, you know, having gone through all of this. I mean, speaking with Mr. Meeks on, you know, the ideas, um, you know, for all of it, you know, I mean, it fits. Uh, especially, I like the part about adding on the other similar uses, uh, provision in there because even though we go through there, and there's an extensive list that has been created over the years, the, you know, not everybody can think of everything, you know, that can happen. So if you can, you know, have that little bit of leeway, and it gives y'all a little bit of leeway because statutorily, if you have a list, that means it's, that's the only things that can go there. And if you give yourself the wiggle room there, there are other things you can consider similarly.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions, Mr. Meeks?
I have one.
Mr. Hal?
And I think I had to ask you one time for, is there a minimum or a maximum on what qualifies as an RV park, like five lots or more, one lot or more? Do we have anything like?
We, we don't, we don't have that because, um, you know, under, under a regular recreational permit, you're limited to one. There is a section of the statute that actually falls under the Health Department guidelines, and under their definition, it is anything more than four sites. It falls, but it's not necessarily just limited to RV parks. It falls under mobile home parks as well. Um, so they, they have a section of the statute that, that governs what they fall as a, as defined as a RV park or a mobile home park that falls under the Department of Health guidelines, and then there is a, a following set of criteria that, that goes behind that.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Meeks?
No, sir.
Seeing none, now open the floor to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing.
When it comes back before the board for adoption, I'll reverse the order of those roads.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Let's see. Yeah. Trying to get back to it. Item number sixteen at five thirty-five or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider a special permit for temporary use request, number SPTU two-three dash oh-three dash oh-one by American Promotional Events, DBA TNT Fireworks, to be granted a special permit for temporary use under section fourteen point ten of Swan County Land Development Regulations for a fireworks tent sale to be held starting June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three through July fifth, two thousand and twenty-three on properties on commercial intensive. Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is another application that TNT Fireworks has had. Uh, by now, I think everybody's familiar with their process and when they hold their events, but they, they have a, an event at the Fourth of July, and they have another one at the first of the year for New Year's. Uh, I think this is about the thirteenth application that they've had before us. They do it on an annual basis. Uh, we've never had any issues with their application process or any issues on the property as far as cleanup goes. Um, they do also secure a, uh, a permit through the Fire Marshal's Office with, uh, Mr. Tim White, and I know that he does go out and do a site inspection, uh, for the requirements that they have to have on his side. Um, but this would be for the Fourth of July event. It would run from June twenty-sixth through July the, uh, fifth. So at this time, I don't have anything else to add. Uh, we'd enter the file into the record. You have a resolution in your packet for approval if the board so chooses to approve the request.
Thank you. I'll take the, the packet in as composite exhibit one for the public hearing. Thank you.
Is there any questions in the staff?
No, sir.
That's right. This time, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
I'll see you.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five o.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll close public hearing. Moving along to consent agenda, we're gonna remove item four to bring back for a future, at a future meeting. And I'd like to pull item ten just for clarification. Is there any, any other items, anybody? Seeing none, we would be considering items two and three, five through nine, and eleven through fourteen. Is there any discussion, or can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve consent agendas, items two and three, five through nine, and eleven through fourteen.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number ten, authorization for the chairman and county adminis, administrator to negotiate with the highest-ranked firm for county attorney. Well, before the, for the, you, that wasn't here for the special called meeting, before this meeting, we, uh, went over for hiring a new attorney, and there was only one attorney that applied, so we ranked that attorney and moved it forward to this meeting to authorize the, the chairman and county administrator to negoti, negotiate with the future attorney and bring back to the board a proposal. I just wanted to clarify that for anybody. Does anybody have any questions on that?
If you would, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, it's just like a regular bid opening type thing. Announce, you know, who it is, and then make the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pravat. So with that being said... Do I need to? Go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Attorney, um, do we make a motion on it to accept it, or, or because the negotiations haven't been brought back?
You announce, you announce who it is. By consensus is what you have. You announce who it is, you accept that.
Okay.
Either accept it or reject, and then authorized to negotiate.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So we're authorizing for the chairman and county administrator to negotiate with the highest-ranked firm for a county attorney, which was Mr. Adams, Adam Morrison. Does everybody agree to that? Or do you need a motion?
I need a motion on that part.
I'm sorry. Motion. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mobley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. What else did we need, Mr. Pravat?
Now the motion to go ahead and authorize him.
Can I get a motion to authorize?
Motion, authorize it.
Commissioner, uh, motion by Commissioner Mobley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. Thank you, gentlemen. Are we good there, Mr. Pravat?
Yes, sir.
Are there any staff items at this time?
Chairman, commissioners, I just wanted to give you an update, uh, at our last meeting, whenever we spoke about getting out of the interfacility business. I told you I would come back to this meeting and try to give you an update on kind of a date when we would be able to, to finish that. Unfortunately, I don't have a, a drop dead date at this point. Um, I've been trying to get in contact with the companies that the hospitals told me that they're gonna be working with. They haven't been able to give me an exact time of when their staff will be on. I'm anticipating within the next couple of weeks that it'll happen. But, um, you know, hopefully, you know, we'll be able to get that with, with what you approved tonight with the COPCNs. That gets the process moving faster, and, um, but I just wanted to update you guys on that, that we are, we're diligently working to try to figure out when that time is gonna be, but we also don't want to leave our citizens hanging, you know, until we get, get it set up for somebody to be able to come in there and do that, so.
Thank you, Chief Hand. Any other staff items at this time? Any commissioner items? County attorney items?
Yes, sir. I have one, Mr. Chairman. It's an update on the, uh, KSA contract, Kurt Spritzer and Associates, for the redistricting. Um, if you'll recall, back on March twenty-first, we approved new, uh, revised contract for KSA and an interlocal agreement with the school board, uh, for them to pay half of the, the cost of that. Well, we also discussed at that meeting that we would not be tendering the agreement to KSA until, uh, the school board approved the interlocal agreement. Well, the school board on, um, on the eleventh of this month went ahead, and they have approved the, uh, interlocal agreement, which commits them to half of it. So it's fully executed now. So at, as a result of that, I checked with Mr. Scott, and we went ahead and forwarded the agreement to, uh, Mr. Spritzer and KSA, and they have now executed, uh, that particular agreement. Um, I have it returned now. If you'll recall, the total cost is thirty-two thousand dollars. We're gonna pay half. School board, you know, pay half. Um, but, uh, having it done, part of the agreement was to, uh, that we would pay, uh, the fourteen thousand dollars, uh, at the execution of the agreement. I forwarded it to Mr. Scott for processing, but what we need here is really an expedited approval from y'all to go ahead and have that, uh, check released so we can get it on out to him in the next day or so.
So you need, just need a motion for that?
Yes, sir. Just for the expedited, um, release.
Any questions of Mr. Pravat, or do I get a motion to approve?
No, sir. I, I'd move to approve the expedited release of those funds. Is that good enough?
Motion by Commissioner Lynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Anything else?
No, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Did you say fourteen thousand?
Yes, sir.
Or is it six? Total cost thirty-two thousand?
Fourteen of thirty-two.
Fourteen of thirty-two, okay.
Right.
Moving on to general business. Item number seventeen, discuss with possible board action, offers on surplus property located on Seventy-Fourth Street. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Chairman, board, um, as you recall, uh, there's a piece of property on, uh, Seventy-Fourth Street that, uh, you asked for prices for through Poor Realty. Uh, you set the price minimum price, or you set the price at forty-two-five on January third. Uh, openings were all, bids were, or proposals were open April sixth at ten AM, and, um, you have the, the proposals in your packet. There were seven offers altogether.
So we need to just accept an offer?
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion?
Um, no discussion. Just looking at the numbers, I'd say offer five.
I like the offer seven, but that's got a long-term finance deal with it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would, uh, for the record, indicate that, uh, staff really frowned upon the financing last time with a three-year balloon. This one particularly doesn't offer a three-year balloon, so I'm sure they will be overwhelmingly tickled should you decide to, or should the board go decide, decide to go with that one? So I'm kinda leaning with Commissioner Hale.
It says on that, number seven.
Five.
Mr. Chairman, I did receive some information from Poor Realty that, uh, the offer number seven might be willing to do a cash offer, but I suggested them that that should have been in the packet. Um, I don't know if, the council may have a different opinion about that, but, um, just, um, I don't know. Anyway, just information.
You can't do it for thirty years anyway, so.
Okay. But what it says there is buyer will be at the meeting should the county not accept the initial offer. Buyer would like the opportunity to change bid during the meeting. I assume that's a logo?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at the numbers. I mean, I, I've seen all that on seven, but if you just look at the numbers, number five was your highest bidder.
And just for the public's, I don't know, I assume y'all don't have this, but offer number five is a offer price of forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars with a net to the county of forty-three thousand, five sixty-nine. It's a cash offer, no financing, thousand dollars in escrow. They have seen the property, thirty days closing, and that's a few places.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure, sure. There's five and six, and three are real. Did you read the numbers there?
Name and address, please, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm Annette Chauncey. I live, uh, with my husband Trey at one-eight-nine-three-three Seventy-Sixth Street, um, which is right around the corner from the property that you're looking at now. Um, Trey and I brought... Trey and I brought this property to the attention. It's been on the off the tax rolls for 11 years. And several years ago, we've looked at it because it's on the backside down a couple lots from where we're at into purchasing it and it wasn't brought forth. And so my husband retired from the military and so we're looking at it again because we have three daughters who are getting up to that age. And we like to acquire a homestead or place for them to live that's in proximity of where we're at. And I don't know if you look where ours is at, we have a road out the back of our property that is like two lots down. And so that's why we submitted the bid. And so when you're looking at the bids, just bringing that to attention, that that's something that is we're, you know, trying to find to keep our children close to us, which, you know, all parents are trying to do when they get to that age. But I've got one in front and I'm working to get my second one in the back so that... So one day I can have grandchildren that are coming up to the house there. And so when you're looking at the numbers, we offered more than what the county asked for the property in hopes of bringing in some, bringing it this way towards us as far as...
Just so you understand, we don't know who did what here and I don't want you to say.
Right.
But there's seven offers here. They're just numbered one to seven for us, so we have no idea who submits the offers.
Yeah, I'd have a question. You just said in the proximity. I don't know.
Well, I know they look at adjacent.
Does it, is it?
It does not touch our property, but it's like I say, it's close.
Okay.
As far as that's concerned. So that's all I have to thank you for the consideration and for letting me speak. I appreciate that.
So we have offer five, which is other than the financing offer for 30 years that we can't accept anyway. You have offer five is the highest at 46,350, offer six at 45,000, offer three at 45,000. And they go down from there. So those are the top offers. I think all three are cash buyers.
Bless you.
They've all seen the property and they can...
Bless you.
...in 30 days or less.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, number five, I mean, we can't deal with it 30 years and I have no problem with going with number five.
Is there any other discussion?
Commissioner Hale, your district.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, it's one of those things. I don't know, we don't know who's bidding what here. I know we can't do seven like the attorney said. Bless you.
Usually come in threes.
I get wanting to give it to somebody that's close by. I understand that, but we have no way of knowing who that is. And if it, I'm not sure, Mr. Pruvat, does it matter if the property touches or does not touch or what's?
No, sir, that's under a different requirement that a piece of property that is unusable, then you do the notification for the folks that are actually touching it.
Totally different process.
Different process.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Land.
Could I ask Mr. Pruvat to shed some light on for the public's sake why the 30 years is not acceptable?
As part of the... I think the limit on it is either 15 or 20 years. You can't go past that. Once you do that, you're almost creating an ownership interest for us, you know, in the property. And so they prohibit that. That's why it goes that long. But there's a, can't recall right offhand if it was 15 or 20 years, but I remember we dealt with the same situation several years ago out there in the Downey Park area. I had to look it up then.
So that offer number seven basically is off the table because they're requesting terms that we cannot provide?
Yes, sir. If you recall, whenever I, you know, we would discuss this process, you know, going through, you know, we talked about, you know, having or not having that financing option, you know, in there. I was hoping that, you know, with the process, we want it to be as clean as it would be as if, you know, we got these offers to be able to review, but it'd be as clean as if you walked up to the courthouse step and you made a bid, you know, right then. The only difference would be that you would have an option on 30 or 60 days, you know, to be able to close the transaction. The financing option, you know, was placed in there, but see, it creates a headache and I'm still not in favor of it, just for the board's information.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Land.
That brings a good point, Mr. Pruvat. Should we, going forward, should we eliminate that as an option so that we don't? I mean, I hate for these folks, whoever offer seven is, I mean, they put in their numbers the highest. I mean, this is 62,000. So you love to take that, but maybe if they'd known that we can't do the terms that they're asking for, maybe they could have secured other financing. So should we just remove that as a, so that Poole knows, hey, don't even bring us one with that they're asking us to owner finance?
Yes, sir.
So that those folks that, you know, that could potentially seek other financing prior to submitting their offer?
If you so desire, if you would direct me to be able to remove the financing option from the bid instructions and then remove the financing option from the bid sheet itself. So it'd be, that's the way I would like it stated.
Do you need a consensus or a motion?
I need y'all to vote on it.
Okay.
But we need to...
So do we want to tackle that first, guys, or do we want to deal with the purchase of this piece of property first?
Does it matter which one y'all do first?
Let's deal with the property first and then we'll deal with that, removing that language.
And I guess while we're doing it... Are we removing it to give them a chance? Yeah, I got a question.
No, we're removing. My understanding of this is we're removing the language going forward.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's going forward.
Do we need to? I can't remember. What do we do on the property? And I'm just, if we're going to be changing language for someone like this that may be a joining property owner, does that need to be considered at all in these moving forward?
Under the statutory process, the statutory top process is basically go to the courthouse step and sell surplus property, highest bidder, get it in 10 days and move forward. The alternative to that that we adopted back in 83 or 84, somewhere around there, the alternative was that we could set a process whereby we could utilize a Realtor. Okay, good thing of the word. That we could use a Realtor so that, you know, to be out there, advertise, move it, you know, do that type of thing. And so that's the process that we used for this is the alternative process. But with the alternative process, you know, you can add in or take away differing things, you know, from that. One of the things we had added was the financing part, you know, and, you know, and to give them a leeway, like for the days of closing, you know, if it's important that it was closed in 30 days, but if they offered $10,000 more, but they could close in 60 days, you know, it may be worth for the board to, you know, look at that type of alternative. But that's the process that we chose to do this. It's still, for the lack of a better word, a blind process. You don't want to know who they are, just as if you went out there, you know, to make a bid on the courthouse steps, you know, whoever wins, wins.
Anything further, Mr. Pruvat?
Mr. Chairman, if we're talking about process, I mean, I got a call today from Poole Realty, Andrew Poole and an agent. And they're concerned about length of time. We're going 90 days and feel like people are getting really antsy waiting that long. Would like to see, you know, 45 or 60 days at the most. And we may not, they were going to send me an email relating to that. Probably a little premature in making that decision tonight possibly. But I knew that Mr. Pruvat is very experienced in this process and provides them guidance to stay away from a number if he felt like we needed to. The other thing that they were addressing is the title search up front. They're willing to take care of that in-house. They do that in 14 days, but...
Well, wait a minute, what about a title search now? The county is not paying for a title search at all on this. In any of the full process that we go through on any of these things, that's what, that's problematic with them and problematic with other Realtors in trying to deal with this. That is not the process. We are offering this property as if it was on the courthouse steps. We offer it as is, where is, the condition of the property and as to the condition of the title that is on the property. If there is a title defect out there, it is up to them to do their due diligence and be able to, you know, make all of that determination before they submit this bid thing. If they don't and they come back and they say, oh, well, we've got some kind of title issue or whatever, well, we've got an escrow deposit right here that we get to keep and they get to move on to something else and we rebid it. But that is, that is a Realtor thing, not our process. So we just stay away from that.
Good. Thank you. What's your advice?
In any, as far as length of time we stay, before we circle back around and award the bid and should we...
Again, this, by you picking whoever it is tonight, the way I have the agreement and the bid form, everything done, it is, you sign that contract, that is the contract. It is all done there, so it is done. When it's 30 days, it's 30 days from the date the chairman signs it, you know, for closing, if that's what it says on the sheet that they submit. I only have the summary sheet here. I don't have the actual, you know, document here. So it's what they have done. But what you're saying is the Realtor, because they get antsy, they want to get their commission in 30 days rather than 45 or 60 days, they want you to consider saying that it has to be 30 days or it has to be no more than 45 days and eliminate just the blank that sits there that says how many days till closing?
But I think what he's referring to is the advertising process.
Right, it was the advertising piece, advertising it longer than...
Okay, well, advertise, you know, as you went through, we've done this, you know, before where we, and I think you suggested that 90 days was too long, was too long a period. And then we said, well, 30 days was too short and we've had that conversation and we settled on 45 days. So there was a back and forth.
So is it 45 now?
But if you want to consider something, you know, a longer period of time, again, that's up to y'all for the advertising section.
I think it's where it's at.
They were under the impression it was 90 days. If it's 45, 45 days works. Okay.
Okay.
Good, okay. Thank you.
With that being said, is there any further discussion on this?
No, sir.
I'd like to entertain a motion to take offer number five for $46,350.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to accept offer 46,350 for the property.
Item number.
Item number.
Offer number.
Yeah, item number five.
Offer number five. Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor of aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero, offer number five. Are there any additional agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to review the financing options?
What was that? Oh, yeah, we go back to the financing options on that. Do we want to remove the financing options or change the financing options?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm open to Mr. Pruvat's recommendation, but I kind of think that maybe we should just cut out the financing option altogether.
I agree. Like I said, it complicates the process that could happen even faster on the courthouse steps.
And then it gives buyers that maybe could obtain financing elsewhere, they know that we're not providing it, so don't ask for it. So they come in here with a really strong offer thinking that we're going to take it, but one, we can't even do 30 years, which is unfortunate for whoever offer number seven is, but just like you said, like Mr. Pruvat said, it just cleans up the process.
Okay, so we'll be misleading. Was that a motion you gave?
I can. Mr. Chairman, I move to eliminate owner financing on our surplus properties.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor of aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries to remove financing from any future offers. Are there any additional agenda items? Seeing none, move on to public concerns and comments. Anybody wishing to speak? Name and address, please.
Wayne Hanica, 1183 93rd Road. Sometimes we get so wrapped up in business, we forget to say thank you. So I'm here to say thank you, Mr. Pruvat, the time that you've given to this county and wish you all the luck in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Hanica, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Hanica.
Thank you, Mr. Hanica.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Wesley Wainwright, 16672 129th Road in McAllen. I wanted to say thank you as well. Mr. Pruvat came on board when I was serving as chairman and did a phenomenal job, brought with us, brought with him a tremendous amount of experience. And we were navigating through all the catalyst site and what is now Bender Holes, which was fast-moving and new to all of us. And it was a great relief when Jimmy came on board to help us out with that. And it's been great to see him working with the county these years and I'm grateful for what he's done.
Thank you for those kind words.
Thank you, Wesley.
Anybody else? Seeing none, administrators' comments and information.
Okay, we are working. Gene came to me today, he's one of the supervisors, or I'm sorry, will be in a few days technically, and started running, he ran some numbers on paving versus chip seal on shorter roads. Like Welverne, I know we ran some numbers before on the, all the chip seal roads, but on the short runs, and we're looking at the mobilization and other factors, we think we can probably pave just as cheap or cheaper than chip seal on some of those short roads. So we're evaluating that now. And I don't know if we need a motion to come back and approve that difference than what we had done before, but if we can do it for the same cost or less, granted, that'd be our guys doing the work, not the contractor, but a pay road to me is better than a chip seal if we can do it for the same price.
Now, is that, are you speaking of roads that we already approved and you want to go back and do that now is what you're talking about?
Correct, correct.
Are these like just small subdivisions?
Right, right, just the short roads, right. Not railroad.
I think every district, every road in District Three is short.
We're not going side to side, we're going long ways.
Oh, okay.
I mean, would you just need a consensus on that or something or?
Right, Mr. Pruvat?
Well, I mean, on the particular project, you've authorized them to be chip sealed. I think it needs to come back with a list to be able to change, you know, change that. I mean, it's just an approved list, but I do think it needs to come back.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Scott, when you bring that list back, it would be interesting to see what the, if you could, if it's possible to show what the chip seal, the particular road you want to change, here was our chip seal quote, and here's the number that we feel like we could do it for.
Right.
I mean, even if it's one of a few thousand dollars, I mean, asphalt.
Yeah, we'll break it down by road, definitely, street.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Perkins.
Uh, Mr. Scott, if you pave it, would that require engineering?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
You know, our guys, I mean, not for the short roads, I mean, if you had a bunch of hills and valleys and things, I mean, then we would, but we would not need that.
We did, we did one already, didn't we?
Right, but we did, we did Oakwood Forest is a good example, so we've got experience.
And it turned out well.
Yes, it did well.
I haven't been in it, so.
Turned out amazing.
I know they did one, did a little piece for me in McAlpin with a little paving box, and it turned out really good as well.
I see, what is it, one in fives had the paving machine over there.
I don't know, I've seen four over there with it a lot lately.
Hmm, all right.
I was gonna say, every time I call, every time I call and say, hey, I need so-and-so, well, we're over here in four. It'd be a little while.
We doing beavers in there, four.
Oh, yeah, they on a beaver exterminating mission.
Yep.
Another thing, Mr. Chairman, I know there's been some conversation in the past and about the extra taxes that some of the churches have received bills on, and I know there's a process, Mr. Vat is, you know, knows the ins and outs in this, I know that, I've heard it from several of you, several different times, and so I'd like to have Mr. Vat give us the guidance that we need to have for moving forward. I know Neighbors and Gibbons will be giving us their information soon, but again, he's shared with us several times, but I'd like for him to just give us one more shot at it.
Okay. Each year, you know, we've gone through this, and they have a proposed resolution for us about how we go about doing this. These things have been looked at over the years and have been tweaked just a little bit as we have changed the process of assessments, not just us, but the state has changed the process of assessments. And so the question here has been that, you know, looking at dealing with churches and with side lots and other buildings and that type of thing, those are issues that you need to decide yourselves, and when this resolution, you know, comes back in, should be the end of June, the beginning of July, so they meet the September deadline, you know, you need to have, be close, pay close attention to those particular provisions. They usually appear on the third or fourth page and deal with the nonprofits or charitable organizations and what they're allowed to do there. Y'all can do it however you want to, but you can't go backwards and, right now, in the middle of this year, fix what you did, you know, last year. So just keep that in, keep that in mind when you get that mailing from Neighbors and Gibbons.
I'll add to that a little bit, because I've kind of kicked this thing off, and you're right, it's nonprofits, that's how they list it, but it, from what my research is, it's not on the building, it's not on, say, the mill house, if you will, where they have dinners, it's their vacant land, like their parking lot, if you will, or something like that is being taxed where they park, so, and it's not a whole lot of money, but I do think we need to make it right, because it's never been there before, and I don't know how it got changed.
I think three years ago it got put in.
Yeah, but we're tracking it all down, Mr. Vat's been helping, Mr. Scott's been helping, I've got Ms. Jordan involved and Mr. Gamble as well, trying to identify all those, and I'm sure at some point now, if it comes to the board, we're going to have to discuss it further.
That would be for, come tax roll time.
Yeah, but here's the issue...
But I would warn them ahead of time, I mean, you know, and if that's an issue, and if they have an issue, you know, they may see something different that, you know, you see just a little bit of money there for this, but they may see it as a bigger issue on something else. So I would, I wouldn't just wait until then, I'd go ahead and, you know, send something to them to let them look at that issue before it comes to you.
And like he just stated too, I mean, guys, this is kind of time-sensitive, because we're coming up on three years, and some of these folks don't feel like they owe it, and then someone could swoop in and buy a tax deed on this thing. So we need to get ahead of it.
So, I mean, is that something we can handle now to authorize the county administrator to notify neighbors?
Yes, sir.
Of that particular issue?
We'll pull out the particular provision and address it with them.
Do you need a, Mr. Chairman?
Consensus or a motion?
Just a directive will be fine.
Yep.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Commissioner Hale, Chairman.
Thank you. On next Thursday, April 27th at 9:00 a.m., we're going to do a ribbon cutting to reopen the terminal at the airport. Got a lot of positive comments about that job and how it's turned out, and just want to invite the public to be at that. We'll be working with the chamber to get the word out, but just want y'all to be aware again, that's April 27th, next Thursday, at 9:00 a.m. at the airport.
Were you going to be in Tallahassee that day? I can't remember.
You'll be back.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Right, we'll get you back.
Wouldn't want you to miss a photo op.
Only last thing I've got is, again, you know, I'd like to echo comments already, but I thank Jimmy and the work he's done for the county, the years he's served, the county, his guidance he's given us, and, you know, back in the park days and stuff, and, you know, we go back and forth trying to help me understand things. Sometimes he helps me understand, sometimes he just hit me in the head and told me this is what we're going to do, but I appreciate what he's done over the years for us and just want to say thank you. I know that he'd like to share a few words tonight before we wrap up, so if you carve out some time for him, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
With that being said, we'll just move right on to Mr. Vat.
All right, well, I had indicated to Mr. Scott that I wanted for you to carve out, initially 42 minutes for me to be able to wrap up what I have here tonight, but I was able to convince him to cut that down to 27 minutes. So everybody out there, y'all be, get your watches out and see, and turn that clock off as we move forward. Okay? No, really, really, all I really want to say is, everybody, that's been an honor and a privilege to serve the board and the residents of Swanee County as county attorney for the past 10 years. I've served this board and endeavored to serve this board and previous boards to the best of my ability throughout my tenure. The position of county attorney is one that serves at the pleasure of the board of county commissioners. Changing board members make for differing viewpoints on the people with whom they want to work with. If the board's consensus, as they do, is to make a change to different personnel, it is their prerogative and right to do so. In this instance, it's just business. Contracts come and go, and contracts start and begin, start and end every day. It's just business. My family's roots are deep in Swanee County. After law school, I was offered several opportunities around the country and the state to go to work. However, I chose to come back to Swanee County to make a home and a place of work for my family. Bettering Swanee County as a home and place for my family, friends, neighbors, coworkers, has been a focus of my business and particularly of my worship for the last 40 years. Without criticism of this board or any individual members, let me say that my overall experience working with the commissioners and the county staff has been a great pleasure and learning experience and growth experience for me as an individual. Recent experiences has not diluted my resolute commitment to continue to serve this community through family, church, schools, community service clubs, and many other activities. Now, in addition, it's going to give me an opportunity, I'm looking forward to moving on to other opportunities that have now been afforded to me since I won't be sitting up here at various different times. And finally, it means that I'll have a hell of a lot more time to work on my golf game. I want to thank you, Swanee County.
Closing comments, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir. Just thankful for a good meeting we had tonight here, and thankful to see Mr. Fleming in the audience tonight, and to everyone here, thank you for coming, and we just pray that everybody have a safe trip back home, and I hope that you enjoy yourself out here. And to Mr. Vat, it has been an honor to sit on this dais with you and to hear all your wisdom here and to direct this board, because it just gets quite scary when I went to that FACS conference and being in that classroom and hearing that man tell us about all the do's and don'ts as commissioner, and hearing some that even resigned after hearing all those things that a commissioner, that entails being a commissioner, and you can wind up being locked up or things happening, some even left and said that they're going back home to resign from being the commissioner. It was two strings for them, it was scary. Sitting out there, I didn't know all this stuff was there until I got on this end. And to have a man of your caliber to be here to direct this board and a homegrown man here in Swanee County, I'm very proud of, and thank you for being up to and to sit here with you and to hear and even ask your question and to direct me as a newcomer coming on this dais. Thank you, Mr. Vat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, everybody for coming, and then again, I want to thank Mr. Vat for his service as well.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mobley. Mr. Land?
Mr. Fleming, good to see you. You should come more often. Yeah, I will echo everyone's sentiments, it's been a privilege to serve Mr. Vat, he's taught me a lot of things, like Mr. Scott said, sometimes he might have hit me over the head with a book saying, you can't do that, or don't do it like that, but a wealth of knowledge sitting down there at the other end.
Yes.
And anyway, a privilege to serve, and obviously, he's done a lot for this community, will continue to do a lot, whether through church or civic organizations, and look forward to seeing him around. I don't want to let this opportunity go by, I believe we have a commissioner that has a birthday today, Mr. Kling here, also known as Commissioner Hale. Is he how old today?
It's not important.
How old? You're not a female, so I can ask you your age.
52.
52.
52.
So happy birthday to Commissioner Hale.
Thank you.
I hope you're gonna go home and grill yourself a steak and your wife a steak for dinner.
Right. Yeah, I'm not going to McDonald's for Mr. Fleming.
Yeah, if you were living with Commissioner Fleming, you'd get a Happy Meal or something, as he's told us, as he's told us before for his wife at her anniversary, but anyway, happy birthday to you.
Appreciate that.
And I think that's it. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Chris Land, Chris Trail.
I'm just right in line with every one of y'all. Mr. Vat has been, you know, I know he gets tired of seeing my phone calling, I mean, that number come up, but I've worn him out over the years, and just because, like you said, he's a wealth of knowledge, and he's just, he's guided me and helped me, and I appreciate it, and I know he'll do well whatever he does, he's a successful guy and he'll be fine, and I do appreciate what he's done there for this board and for this county and answering my crazy questions, and like you guys said, sometimes it just seems so simple, why can't we do this, and then when he starts talking, it's like, okay, I get it, I understand, so, but I want to thank him and thank everybody for being here, and that's all, and thank y'all for the birthday, so.
Happy birthday.
Yep.
Mr. Vat, I appreciate you, you've been real wise and a lot of help to me since I've been here, and I'll always remember, besides all the ethics stuff that he brought me in and told me I could and couldn't do and mostly couldn't do, and you get to talking to him about something and he'd give you an answer, and then you'd come back later and he'd say, well, you didn't ask the question the right way. So he'd always tell me, you got to ask the question the right way, so that sticks out at me, and I appreciate what you've done for the county, you've been a great service to the county, and Godspeed with you and hope you have a great time. Thank you. Also, I'd like to move on to something personal for me, had another grandbaby this week, April 19th.
Congratulations.
He's a, he's a big hammer knocker, so, he was nine pounds, 10 ounces, 22 inches.
Oh, ooh, he was grown.
He's got a set of paws on him.
Genetics, the genetics.
Good genetics, that's what I tell my wife, good genetics. But thanks, everybody, I appreciate everything, and with that, I just need a motion to dismiss.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Mr. Perkins, all in favor, aye?